We'll go ahead and get started. Jacobs.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watt.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Okay, we have approval of minutes.
Jacob.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watt.
Yes.
Allen. Yes. Johnson.
Yes.
And adoption of the agenda?
I'd like to amend the agenda. I'd like to move miscellaneous matters from the mayor and over city council as pertaining to the fire code. I'd like to move those before second reading of ordinances.
Meaning appearances?
I'm sorry, appearances. The council not listed on the agenda. Any discussion related to the fire code, I'd like to move prior to second reading.
And then also I'd like to temporarily remove the anti-accident scholarship while I go into the meeting. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watt.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we have a proclamation for fire protection week.
Yeah. Really. I'm rich as I can come up with you guys.
Come on, boys.
You just stand back here and go, yeah, I'm sure they recognize me. I'm not even there. I get all my hair up there, I definitely get recognized.
Yeah.
Whereas the city of Warrensburg is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living in and visiting Warrensburg. Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. And whereas, the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occurred at home each year. And whereas, the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to the U.S. Fire Department was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. And whereas, Warrensburg's residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, Warrensburg's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside of each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas, Warrensburg's residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas, Warrensburg's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive in a fire. And whereas, first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Warrensburg residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware: Fire Can Happen Anywhere," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Danielle Johnson, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, do hereby proclaim October 7 through 13, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Warrensburg. I urge all the people of Warrensburg to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Warrensburg Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2018, dated September There's a lot in there.
Okay, up next, this is where we're going to readjust the agenda a little bit to include
some of the public comments. We have fairly good agenda here and lots of important things to vote on, so we are going to ask that we keep those to about three minutes for each person who will be speaking tonight. We appreciate you for attending. Thank you. Okay, up first we have Gary Brigsby from Matthews Crawford Post 131, American Legion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bruce. I am the judge advocate of Post 131 and deal with all the legal matters. And in an unaccustomed word, having become in gravity, I'm here to introduce our president of the board, or actually the vice president of our board, Derek Proppins, and he will be here in place of our president, Jerry Seelinger, who is out at the stage on his honeymoon. And so I turn it over to Derek Proppins.
Thank you, Derek. As Gary said, I'm here in place of General Seelinger, our commander of president and our board and directors. He has asked me to be here and represent the legion to make sure that the council understands the legion's position on the proposed ordinance. I'm going to limit my speech to a very simple thing. I've worked beside these fire department gentlemen for many years, and I respect them greatly, and I respect what they do, but we don't always agree on everything. And this is one of those situations where we don't exactly agree on everything. Instead of me sitting up here telling you what my 27 years of experience in fire protection and life safety tell me, I've been retired for two years. We went out and hired a consultant to come in and look at our situation and tell us what they thought about it. And I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Mr. Justin Burton, and I'll let him introduce the rest of yourself.
Thank you, Mayor.
House Speaker, again, my name is Justin Burton. I'm with FPC, we're a fire protection and building code consulting firm out of Kansas City. We work in approximately 50 states, all over the country, all over the world, involved pretty heavily in the ICC process with adoption of new codes, adopting of existing codes, utilization of residential code, building code, IRC, international existing building code, fire code, life safety code. I'm here today basically on behalf of some of the businesses that are being affected by the provisions in the code that would require all establishments that have 300 or more occupants that are classified as A2, where drinks can be consumed to have sprinklers installed in the buildings. I personally am a strong supporter of sprinkler systems. We design sprinkler systems, again, but there is a place and there is a time for sprinklers. It is our opinion that there's other passive systems that can be done and maintained in buildings that provide a better level of safety than sprinklers. Sprinklers aren't good for controlling fire, but if you have adequate means of egress, adequate lighting, adequate exit signs, posted occupant load, evacuation plans, there's all sorts of other passive systems that can be installed to better your building and to make it as safe as a sprinkler building. You can't say that sprinklers make your buildings safer, because there's all sorts of buildings that are in the IEDC that are permitted to be built without sprinkler systems. And just because there is an arbitrary number of 300 that says that 300 people, you got the sprinklers in your establishment, or 100 people, you got the sprinklers in your establishments. It's a knee-jerk reaction. I'll say the building code industry tends to have a knee-jerk reactions. Examples, 9/11, there's a lot of high-rise provisions that are in the building code now because of 9/11. There's a lot of knee-jerk reactions with assembly occupancies, Rhode Island fire, which is what 95% of this code provision and code change is based on. And I have the action here, the agenda action items from the proposed changes from ICC that I'd be more than happy to share with the members of the council. And which is talking about the Rhode Island nightclub fire, where 300 or more people were in the building, and there was a lot of casualties, a lot of deaths. Very tragic, nobody can dispute that. The building had exits with chains on them, so the exits were chained shut. It had foam insulation and non-class A interior finishes hanging on the walls, and they used interior fire techniques with a ceiling height less than eight feet. So you do the math, and it's like the perfect storm. I mean, of course, when a fire breaks out in an establishment with low ceiling heights, the fire is going to handle quickly. If they don't have adequate means of egress, they're going to be trapped in the building. Again, all tragic items, all are avoidable, 100% avoidable accident. And if they would have adequate exits, signage, doors unlocked, proper inspections, which I'm a strong supporter of having proper fire inspections, make sure your lights are active, your doors are unlocked, and exit signs are illuminated. Those things need to be done. I do find it a little bit odd that Chapter 11 is being adopted in its entirety. Most jurisdictions around the country, including Kansas City, Missouri, which is a large municipality, specifically exempted Chapter 11 from the fire code. So they're not even going to adopt any. The only thing they adopt is radio-covered responses under that. I also find it odd that the International Existing Building Code allows you to do level one, two, or three alterations without adding sprinklers to your building. So I feel like there wasn't a lot of thought put into that provision in the code that requires all assembly occupancies with an occupancy letter greater than 300 to be provided sprinkler protection. I got involved late in the game, and I wish I would have been involved a little bit sooner in this process. Again, I'd be more happy to answer any questions on my opinions or on facts of my thoughts or anything that anybody would have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And you are at Justin Burton, correct?
I am, yes.
You're number two.
I'm number two, yes.
I'm going to finish up. I wanted to make sure that you all understood it, that we support safety for people too. But when we look at the cost that we're facing, we might survive, but some of your other businesses may not. When I look at $140,000 of a cost to put a sprinkler system in our facility, I'm going to be the biggest one. There's some here tonight that tell you that their estimates are higher than that. So we want you to keep that in mind, but this is extremely extensive. And when we view what our alternatives are, you know, from surrendering the liquor license to simply going out of business, whatever it may be, that's a lot of things that we do in the community that we won't be able to do. If we surrender the liquor license, then on the cost, it's a few thousand dollars a year, costs you a couple thousand dollars a year, so that's probably the easiest. But he's giving you an option for an easier alternative to guarantee safety, one that's less imposing on your businesses, less costly for us, and still can renew, boil it up the safety of your citizens and protect it. So I encourage you, American Legion, encourage you, our 450 members, encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, up next we have Mike Bodenhammer.
No, I won't take too long. I just want to echo what Justin's saying, he sounds very like expert on it, and I trust his judgment. I want to thank y'all for listening, because I've talked to most of you over the last couple of weeks. I'm glad it's done to this. We need to decide some, because I think everybody's getting stressed out on it. But I've been in business for 30, about 43 years here, legal's been in about over 30, and we've invested our lives, time, and money to try and supply some entertainment and something doing this now. And we've been passed inspections and considered safe for the last four decades. So I don't think it's right to pass a law that, in my opinion, is an ex post facto law, which is constitutional kind of thing. I think it also disperates future business. I know 43 years ago, if these things were hanging over my head to open a business, I'd win somewhere else. You can't expect people to invest $140,000, which is mine, at a minimum, in a business that's not going to bring in any other business, something I have to hear bottom line, and expect them to survive. That's about all I have to say. I think Justin had it coming on the head pretty good. If it wasn't good enough for Kansas City, I don't want to blow up your capacity. Thanks for your time.
And lastly, we have John Arnold from ALPS 673.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I have handouts, that's okay. So everybody, brief, brief, and I'll continue that trend. Let it start while we're having our handouts. I'm a member of ALPS 673, and I'm a law player, also a member of American Legion, and I love brothers, and I speak on behalf of ALPS 673 about the sprinkler issue. Gentlemen, too, before we already mentioned some of the justice, there's the nightclub fire station of North. I want to jump right into the fledgling side of this. So these issues are a little harder to come by a detail, we talked about that two weeks ago, it takes some time to do that. We did give one perfectly solid estimate from you. It was our sprinkler company out of Warsaw, Missouri. As you can see, we're going to have $99,285 to do the inside work of the sprinklers, and the scope of work is there. However, there are these huge exclusions to this scope of work. I don't want to go through them to say the first two are covered below by the J.C. Myers construction. That's basically the outside work from the main getting in and some other things. However, the fact that we have two in there, you'll also know engineering fees, including things like that. So the bottom line here is that at the bottom here, 147.785, is not going to be the inclusive price of the sprinkler system. That is kind of a pipe tree number. And then, again, we've got the root of it out of the water, is the fact that one of our main services far within the building, and we have to have a water company install a larger or longer line, that can be a very expensive one. So again, 147.785 is the basement at best for this estimate. So farther below, what I did was, I'm showing what is currently the static revenue of ALPS Lodge with 224 members. Now, I say 224, based on the reporting period last fiscal year, it is 34 members of the ALPS Life members, and they do not pay a million dollars a year every year to use this accurate income for the lodge. So they have $17,920 a year. Rest of our income is made up by things like renting out the building and serving meals for our members and the community every once in a while. That price fluctuates, so to put together some kind of a thing, I want to add a good estimate. If you take, decided to, if you take the fluctuating cost, and you assume that every time we have an event, we could average netting $1,000 a month over that event, not including paying for the facility and things like that, that would give you about $30,000 a year, which would be about $2,500 a month. If we were to take that as a number, take 20% of that, and use our pipe tree number of 147, it would take us 24 years to pay this off or save up for this operation. And you can see lower, it could go to $200,000, it's more realistic, you're talking over 30 years, it's only the equivalent of this system plan. That being said, the back of the file is really just what the ALPS does, it's just a snapshot that I'm not going to hold to you. There's some health programs on the left, it's all inclusive, I'm sure I forgot a couple. On the right, just goes on the National Double Dam. This year alone, the ALPS National Foundation has already appropriated $33.77 billion for us in the United States. If you go down to the ENF in Missouri, in last fiscal year, they owed out $298,000, $300,000. $200,000 went to them in donations, so that's another $100,000, which you can see the ratio is about a buck fifty to a buck on what we're getting when we spend money through ALPS. And that's a number of donations and things like that. What you see is a community investment program, those are listed in the middle left, those are other grants, and they're listed, they're initially a different category of grant, but the bottom line of the grant is that they can have it used for several things, including lodging and essential repairs. The last thing you see on the bottom is we have the dental dams, you're familiar with seeing that around town, and that just outlines what that is. There's three of them in the state of Missouri, so we have one in our district, and they say there is 3,000 patients a year for around $700,000 worth of care, basically for free. So that's what the ALPS does, it's a community. Based on what we do and the frequency we do it in, two to four rentals a month, and a few members that it's things, we don't operate like a regular restaurant, we don't operate like a nightclub. When you do, it's announced on the ALPS, we're the same way, we're the other way to operate the way we operate. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Okay. So thank you to those who participated over the last week. A lot of community participation. Next, we have the second reading of the ordinance. An ordinance establishing minimum regulations governing the safeguarding of life and property from fire and explosion hazards, known as the Fire Prevention Code of the City of Warrensburg, State of Missouri.
The mayor, members of the council, as you said, this is the second reading of the fire code ordinance that we brought forward. There's been lots of discussion, lots of stuff on it. I brought this forward to you as my position as fire chief. It's handed to us from the code committee, as recommended to be passed in an adapted form from all the book required. It's up to you to make a decision how we want to proceed forward.
If I understand it correctly, two of the six no longer are involved, because they were able to change their seating or heroes as permanently changed their seating and to an arrangement and keeping it that way to, and they're under their 5,000 square feet is required. Okay. And at the point right now, whatever his name is this week, garage, warehouse.
District, yeah.
District. Is putting a sprinkler system in the section of remodeling now.
Did Bodys change their seating things? I heard a Bodys had changed their seating arrangements.
They have, we've gone down there and talked to Mr. Bodenhammer in reference to changes and what we did.
Okay. I prefer not to.
Yes, sir.
So I just didn't want to speak, the international building code has a requirement for limiting your square footage to less than 5,000 square feet, but that is not in the fire code. The fire code just says it's 300 occupants, so limiting your occupant loading facility to 300 could be a potential option, and if that is something that's feasible to some of the parties involved. Again, it is up to the authority of the jurisdiction to allow increased or decreased occupant loads. Typically, you base your occupant load on the assigned square footage, and if you were building new today, if you were to build a new today, the 5,000 or 12,000 square foot limitations for an A1 occupancy is 12,000 square foot, 100, and A2 is 5,000 square feet or 300, and A3 is 100 occupants as well. So the building code has the requirements for the square footage, but the fire prevention code does not. It just says in areas that serve alcohol with more than 300 occupants, so it's not area-driven for the enforcement code. So it's just an option that I think is possibly feasible for some of the businesses that are engaged in this.
So in the fire code, Chapter 11 is the businesses we're talking about, and he said something about Kansas City, Chapter 11 out. What would that do if we just hypothetically grandfathered or took whole Chapter 11 out?
Any improvements in existing buildings? The newer fire code, newer safety regulations would not apply to any existing building of any type. What would be typical in that circumstance would not be that you delete the entire chapter of the code, which you referenced in the previous chapter of the code, or did not have that standard law. You'd reference the International Existing Building Code, which has standards for percentages of work based on the work area. So there's a lot of things that say, based on the percentage of work in which you do in that building, thou shall do X, Y, Z. For example, if you do more than 50% of the renovated area, you have to add sprinklers to that area, or you have to upgrade the sprinklers. And it allows, as I said, it allows grandfathers for historic buildings, existing buildings, and a level of renovation based on the scope of work in which it's done. So it's more enforceable, because it pushes you to a code that is a regulation for building something like that.
And that's in our current code, right? I was, yeah.
You read the document, the 2018 Existing Building Code, that's to go into effect on October 1. You have currently on the books today, the 2012 Existing Building Code.
But isn't, it's in the code that if, if an 80% or more of a building is renovated, that it has to meet the current code? Is that correct?
I don't remember it's worded that way.
It's based on a Level 3 alteration is, I think it depends on the area being renovated, but it is based on a percentage of work area.
I found our code says 75% was, if a modification was more the same.
Brett's in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. You speak.
What Justin's saying on the numbers, yes. Or the level, there's a Level 1, 2, 3 alteration, and it is about the remodeled work area.
So we've already adopted that part, right?
Correct.
So if the council did want to take Chapter 11 out instead of just grandfathering, we still have that renovation, okay, for new existing businesses coming in town and anyone that's renovating?
Correct.
Brett, I guess my question is, if American Legion, ALPS Lodge, players, any of these facilities were to renovate at one point beyond that percentage, they would have to meet the code at that point?
Yes, if it's required, as Justin was saying, based on the square footage, yes. It said that a sprinkler was required, yes.
So those, so if these buildings were grandfathered, and then they did a modification of more than X percentage, they would lose their grandfather clause and would have to read.
Yeah, correct, by the Existing Building Code, based on that percentage of remodel.
So I guess one of my questions here, and I may get a red, one of our options, like Number 1, do not adopt this part of the code, is that Chapter 11?
No, that's just the whole section here, that's just.
The grandfather number 1.
I doubt all of that is, we're isolated to that issue. In the strongest possible terms, I would urge the council not to delete in its entirety the whole chapter of the code.
I just want to understand, Number 1, that's just saying that the justice is that we're talking about, right?
The option, you're just talking about alcohol.
Right.
Right.
The option for Chapter 1, or Number 1, was the specific portion of the code that deals with this, which is 11.5.1, which deals with the grandfathering of the sprinkler code. It was not, I never intended to adopt the current code.
I was just using that for an example, and that's not my recommendation either. I just wanted to point that out as an example, because, again, the IEDC also has a scoring system, and the scoring system allows you to basically do an evaluation of your facility, like how much stuff do you have that is safe for the building? For example, if you don't have sprinklers, you get a score for having smoke detection in your building. Or if you don't have something that's required by the current code, you get a bonus. So it's a, if you end up with a passing score, basically at the end of the day, it allows your building to exist as is. So there's all sorts of variables in the IEDC, International Existing Building Code, that allows for existing businesses without undue financial hardship to remain in operation, and it allows you to do small renovations without having to have this huge amount of effort. And the same thing with accessibility, I mean, it's similar requirements. If you have accessibility requirements for a building, they're just as important, except for feds can sue you now. So it's a little bit of a different conversation, but it is regulated as well.
Okay. So would we have the ability to say grandfather these properties in, but at the same time with stipulations that you can't have a concert with fire tactics? You have curtains hanging up, they have to be fire retardant.
All that is already in the code, no place is. The specific section of the code is 11, yeah, 11 or 3.5.1, where it states specifically where alcohol beverages are consumed in a Group A2 occupancy having occupant load of 300 or more, the fire area in Group A shall be equipped with automatic sprinkler systems in accordance with Section 903. the fire area in group A shall be equipped with automatic sprinkler systems in accordance with section nine oh three. That option that I gave you, with the other three options that were presented to you in the last couple of meetings, were, that is only to exempt that one line. As Mr. Harris says, I would never tell you to exempt an entire check through the code, that'd be dangerous to me if you love.
Is there an open flame code anywhere in there?
Yes, there is.
Can I, I was meeting with one businesses this week, and that was one of my questions. Do you know what the open flame code currently says?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It limits, it limits the gallons and the amount of material, and you can't have open flames around combustible materials.
And so much, so many per.
Yeah, but like steno and stuff like that's permitted, it's more of a, it's more candles and things like that.
You can have candle holders sitting and all sorts of stuff like that, where there could be an accident, somebody knocks some bulbs is what the intent is.
Yep.
I think it's time to talk about the real issue, and the real issue is the differentiation between a nightclub and a restaurant. And we need to have a mechanism in place that allows the city to differentiate between a nightclub and a restaurant. And by, by addressing it as seventy percent food or other income and thirty percent to alcohol, and those numbers could vary, those businesses in my mind should be exempt from the sprinkler code. If we grandfather, in my mind, all we're doing is kicking a can down the road, and other council in the future's going to have to deal with this issue. It's on our plate, we need to deal with it.
Hope my grandfather and a few of the businesses, I feel that they're grandfathered in, so it doesn't matter what councils or it's, they're grandfathered in, correct?
So what is proposed is saying it's, we're going to allow restaurants, whether your, your food sales are seventy percent, or your alcohol is only thirty percent, everything else is seventy percent or more, that's going to be on an annual basis, so they, they couldn't just grandfather them in this one time, and then they turn it into a nightclub down the road. They have to rehave that, it'll have to be built into the permitting process, and the alcohol permit or something somehow, to be able to have some teeth so that that's an annual process.
So with Bodys, they're a hundred percent, right? They don't serve food?
They serve food, some of them.
They serve food and cover charge, but you're not going to hit seventy percent.
Not seventy percent food.
There's things that, they're called non-alcoholic, so not just food. And that's also.
Yeah, so, so the alcohol, is, what he's proposing is thirty percent alcohol.
Right. Well, still discriminates in my book, you know, just because they got fingers on one side of the ledger to another, you're denying us the right to make a living.
So then when you said, no, it doesn't, if the council decided to grandfather, what's that do to the different councils?
The technical legal aspect of grandfathering bills with land use skills with zoning does not apply in a setting of health, safety, and law for regulations. So you can adopt those at any time you want and alter everyone's practices going forward, just like what the state said is now mandatory to wear a seatbelt. There, there's no grandfathering, it's just, that's a health, safety regulation. And so while you can adopt a regulation that exempts certain existing structures, that doesn't mean that that regulation is guaranteed ever to change in the future. And a future council could alter that, increase the restrictions, decrease the restrictions as they soften.
So one, excuse me, one, one example, let's say Players decides, Leo decides to retire and accept it. It's no longer grandfathered for the new buyer, right?
No, that's what I'm saying is that, that regulation, whatever it is on the books at that time, is going to apply to anyone and everyone that, that falls into that, whatever, that scope of the exemption or scope of the regulation would be. It doesn't apply to who owns it, it doesn't apply to location, it just applies across the board.
And this would likely come up each time the code changes.
I think it's entirely possible, sure.
Yeah, and can I, I just have a question, I know that you guys also are in the process of adopting the International Residential Code as well, and just so everybody is aware, that the I R C requires every single residential occupancy to be sprinkled, and I believe you guys exempted that from the I R C, which I don't, is that who, I don't know who was speaking in the back?
That's me.
Okay.
We've already passed the I R C, they have.
Okay.
Well, secondly, on that, Justin, the state of Missouri gives a choice, and that law runs out in next year, twenty nineteen. So we put a statement on every plan review that says that builder then has to make sure the homeowner's aware of that.
That's right, so there's.
So the state basically took that out.
Yeah, and I do agree that there are going to be other, I mean, that's, that's just the nature of the code. We're constantly evolving, we're constantly going to have more new regulations. The I V C, for example, used to say a hundred occupants, five hundred occupants, and it didn't have the three hundred cutoff. So I mean, yeah, that's, it's going to come up every code cycle, and, but similar to historic buildings, I believe the council has the ability to state that in order for a building to be considered historic, it has to be built prior to this year. And I don't know what that year is for Warrensburg, but I'm assuming that that is something that the council has also passed, that there is a certain year of cutoff in order for a building to be considered historical. Something similar could be done with that, a date could be established, a business in effect prior to a certain date. I mean, I'm just throwing a, kind of a general recommendation out that a lot of cities do as well.
So in American Legion, they do breakfasts and stuff like that, so if we did hypothetically do the seventy thirty, where are they going to fall? Do they, they don't serve thirty percent alcohol?
They're, they're nowhere near thirty percent on their liquor sales.
No, but they do too.
Yeah.
I mean, Larry, Larry, well, actually, the finance person's sitting right there, so he would know. But I would say, well, we have about fifteen percent, ten percent, even that.
We had less than twenty thousand dollars in liquor sales.
Yeah.
And that included soda pop and water. We don't serve liquor or breakfast.
We might figure out that in the future.
The only way I'm going to do twenty-nine percent, but I'll give you thirty.
But yeah, no, they're, they're nowhere near thirty percent on our sales.
I would assume Players would fall below thirty percent?
I hope so. It, it could, it could vary, it could be anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent liquor, but I mean, it, I'd say in the previous years, if we have a lot of banquet stuff in order for the party, so I, I think, I think I would be safe with that.
But like a business owner too, though, Leo may not have a good year, but he has a good year. Where do you do that when you have thirty-five percent, but then next year it goes to twenty percent because an older one drinking? They wouldn't have to throw them half drinking sometimes. And when? You hit the average when he gets thirty-five, hopefully he gets thirty-five percent now.
And I don't know for sure if the state still regulates, but the state in the, and I'll need some of the borrowers to speak up for me, please, because it used to be that if you had a liquor license, sell liquor, you had to have a certain percentage of food sales, and, and to keep a, a liquor license, and then, so that would only allow you to sell beer and not sell liquor. And I don't know if that's still a different or changed to what that is, but I think the state also has provisions to help regulate that as well.
Yeah, I think it's fifty-one percent.
I've, I don't know.
Sunday stuff, not.
I believe that's right, fifty-one percent, if you want a Sunday license, you have to have fifty-one percent food sales or other than liquor sales.
Yeah.
If you're a bowling alley, the hole, if you're a hotel, you can have a hotel room.
So the state already establishes a percentage.
Yeah, fifty-one.
It's not seventy thirty, but they establish a percentage for liquor sales.
Basically, I guess they feel that way because if you, obviously, if you're selling over fifty percent food, you're considered a restaurant.
Right. And those numbers, the seventy thirty number could be, you know, I put those out there as hypotheticals, but they could be discussed and.
I'm not that far on this, I don't know what would be fair to, if we didn't grandfather as a council member, I, what would be a fair amount to keep businesses open and not have to close their doors? And once again, I have to say again, were you, if Leo got thirty-five percent, I was supposed to say thirty, all of a sudden he's supposed to put sprinkler, sprinkler system up in thirty days? Because the state calls that, hey, he did thirty-five percent alcohol sales. So I don't understand that part, I guess. Where does it come in that now he has to do sprinkler systems because it's doing thirty-five percent?
Or you look at a sixty forty, because there's no nightclub out there selling sixty percent in sales?
No.
And it sounds like forty percent would be a safe.
And sixty forty would be, I don't know where the Elks lands in that equation.
I have it right here. My name's Gary Bakas, I'm the D D G D R for the Upper West District, and I have the twenty eighteen audit report here for the Elks Lodge, and the food costs. The class, please. Food sales for twenty seventeen was.
Who lost him?
Twenty, no. It hasn't given the food cost, but the liquor sales is forty-six percent of our annual income.
Forty-six percent?
Annual income.
But I would like to say too, there's a lot of times that we do fundraising out there, that we provide meals, that the lodge never accounts for any of the money because it goes to a charity event. I mean, we do have breast cancer awareness coming up next month, we actually have a meal this Saturday, and we're doing pork butt and everything else out there, it's ten dollars a person, but it all goes to breast cancer awareness. So there's so many events that we do that we raise money by selling food that we never run through our books because it's all donated to a charity. Just as well as last year, we did the big March for Hunger thing up at the Elks Lodge, we raised over twelve hundred dollars that we gave to the local food pantry, along with the whole truckload full of food that was donated. So our numbers can vary on that because we don't always account for every meal that we serve.
Here, here, the food serving cost, the food sold was eighty-three percent of our budget last year. Do that again for me, please.
What's that?
The percentage again?
Food sales equal to eighty-three percent of our budget last year.
The budget, but not the total sales of the year. Yes, sir.
Oh. I don't know about the other facilities, but I can tell you in our bar, we sell soda, we sell water, we sell mixes, and people that come to the dances don't drink mixed drinks, that's all included in our liquor sales. So we're killing ourselves unless we, you know, unless we can segregate everything we sell, which is almost physically impossible. You're going to overstate your liquor sales, so if you say seventy thirty, we may only be at twenty-seven, but yet our sales reports will say thirty, or thirty-one or thirty-two. I'm not sure using this percentage breakdown is, is, is really the way you want to go, in my opinion. I think there's better ways of solving this problem than just saying an arbitrary percentage of food and liquor, because in the bar, you're selling everything. I'd really like to have you concentrate on the occupancy.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned kicking the thing down the road, well, any council can change anything, so about everything you decide on, you can kick down the road, so. I still don't think it's fair, that's all I'm saying, I don't think it's fair. And that's what it boils down to, you might be laughing, but I.
No.
Well, you're.
What is your occupancy over there, Bodys?
Right now it's four hundred.
Four hundred, okay, so, so, okay, so you're getting below three hundred, three, thirty.
Yeah, but you all can raise that number too, to kind of accommodate everybody too, you know, meet some people halfway. And this ain't fun. I put in forty-three years, though, it's kind of my retirement, and you're all taken away from it. So I think that's a little serious.
I agree.
All right.
I agree.
I'd like to throw a motion out there to adopt number one, do not adopt the part of code, council is allowing no endangerment to continue, however, I'd like to make a motion, grandfather the businesses in that are affected, with chapter eleven in, of course.
Are we able to see if there are any other motion?
Well, you have that motion on the table, under your provisions of chapter two, because it's voted down, and it's voted down, you, consideration you were going to still on the table, you can consider those motions. Can we go back to?
We're going to have a discussion, yeah, we have motions, but.
No, that's fine, you won't discuss, I just wanted to put the motion.
Pull the motions, yeah, ask us, because I haven't.
And they still discuss with my motion, because that's my motion.
Discuss the motion, nobody has, has specifically told for vote, and chair, but all votes.
But that's a motion on the table.
We don't operate under rubber, so.
I would still like for us to consider the percentage. Since the state already has established the precedent of establishing a percentage for Sunday liquor sales of fifty-one percent, I think we need to at least consider some breakdown in percentages.
Bodys isn't open, and is Elks and American Legion sell on Sundays?
Yes, we carry a Sunday liquor license.
American Legion do?
Yes, we do, if we have an intent, we don't normally open on Sundays.
Okay.
Maybe keeping it fifty-one percent.
To say, to say.
The number, the states.
Right, the number of states is easier to handle. I would make that.
We've got one motion on the floor.
So, so are we doing, are we taking a look and now we changing eight two? It sounds like that's really the piece of it.
Yeah.
And so, are we, so are we creating a completely different business license too?
No, we're altering this provision of the code, which frankly, if it's your decision to do anything else to create a change in the code, you should allow that code committee to present you with language to put, place that into application, and not shoot that from the hip here in the meeting. So you have a, a motion on the table, there is other motions to consider, but if anything is altered from the bill as it has been presented with this code language, then, then you should send that back to staff to be finalized, to come back to you for adoption.
My feeling is we're looking at three businesses right now, Bodys can probably, if he doesn't want to, but we're looking at American Legion and Players and Elks. Who else are we looking at that may be touching this?
Would it only be?
Those three?
Well, me.
Me as a council member now, I know I'm going to go off in a couple of years, I feel okay taking this down the line, I think right now for Warrensburg today would be good to grandfather those businesses in. I don't care what happens, I do care, sorry, but as a council member now, that I feel safe, that Players has been safe, thank you Leo for the tour, Bodys, you may have to change your number, possibly American Legion, and Elks, I've been in, I feel that this is not a life threatening at this point, there is plenty of exits for them to get out. So that's still my motion, I'd like to grandfather the businesses in.
I personally would like to see a percentage of the fifty-one, but I understand, so that would mean we couldn't, if we were to say that, we couldn't do anything tonight.
We could take.
First you gotta say my.
Number four, and just change the percentage of that language.
Right.
It's already drafted.
And I'm not saying that we're not.
No, 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 that's okay, yeah.
To be clear with the options right here.
The options that have been presented to you, any of those that involve a change to that code language, specific code language brought back to you to adopt it. And that is not code language, that's, that's a solution, that would need to be drafted into language to fit into a code, and it's a bad idea to draft during the meeting.
Well, and that could be changed too, though, right? Doug, if it did, if the council decided, another council member, a five, could change that, right, to twenty percent.
This council could change that.
Right, okay, so it's still kicking the can down the road.
So you're saying it would not be advised, even though number four has percentages, just to change those percentages, you would recommend to go back to a code council?
With, with, just send it back to staff to provide you with, with an amended ordinance, you've got the ordinance that has all of the, we're making this change to section such and such, and that language would need to be drafted to make sure, if nothing else, that. And that language would need to be drafted to make sure if nothing else, that it's grammatically...
When you look at that section of the ordinance, it's in your packet, U and it's eleven oh three point five point one point one, the way that ordinance is written for that section now, there are no percentages at all. That solution isn't in the ordinance. So Doug's saying we need to write that solution into the ordinance and bring ordinance back?
Correct. If you adopt it tonight as presented, there's no need to do anything differently. If that's not as a matter of policymaking, what this council wants to do, then make the final decision tonight about what that policy directive is and we will provide you with a piece of legislation that will adopt that. So we're gonna make our recommendation tonight. They will make it pretty for us to approve, you know, the legal terms at, at later date, where we can hash out what the, what our intent is.
But I do still have a motion on the table that we do know we need to address.
Right.
Can I ask, is, is the motion, I don't know what the original motion was, is it to adopt the IFC in its entirety? Or is it to adopt the IFC with exception to the eleven oh three point five point one?
Yes.
And just exempt that single sentence from the code?
That's what's on the table, right?
That's what I...
Thank you. Thank you, okay. I just wanted to, I wasn't at the person meeting, I apologize. Thank you.
So if we, okay, so if grandfather is in, we've taken six, the six businesses aren't good until another council would make changes to it, or this council would make changes to it. It's not really a grandfather in the same state as if your grandfather ain't, Doug, showing required?
No.
That's right.
Okay.
Same as your percentages.
Right. So, I mean, right, anything, anything we do can be changed in there. I, it is, I know if your grandfather is, Doug, he can never be changed.
That's kinda what I thought of the grandfather, but I do feel comfortable still grandfathering those businesses in at the moment.
Right.
And where, and there isn't a person sitting up here that wouldn't say, we want to do what's business friendly, we want to take care of our businesses. However, on the other side of that, we also know that in six years, that there's gonna be likely more stipulations.
Right.
We know that it's not gonna be less safe. The trend in everything that we see out there, from cars to schools to, to everything, or appliances and cell appliances, everything, is moving in the safer direction. So what we're nervous of is kicking this down the road and next time, whenever it gets lowered to a hundred, which is what the existing businesses are, and it opens up to not just A twos to serve alcohol, it's all A twos and, and, you know, lots of other businesses are gonna be included someday.
And I feel comfortable with this right now because myself, what happens in six years, we don't know, we don't have this first of all.
I get that, but this week's, there's the perception that, oh, well, they'll just kick it down the road. Well, next time, that may not be the case, and so we want...
If you do fifty-one percent, it could be changed those six years from now too.
Changed it, I mean...
It could be changed anytime.
Couldn't we vote to grandfather in so that you meet your October first requirement and then still ask for them to break that language? Look at, am I wrong in that, Doug?
See, that idea was...
Would it be an option if we were to vote to grandfather those businesses in and then still ask that you bring back language on what classifies, you know, the fifty-one percent or forty-nine percent? So they're currently grandfathered in, but then you're still building...
You can make a change to your ordinance tonight and adopt it and correct that we have further study on some aspect of that so that you can decide if you wanna do something different once the ordinance is imposed. So what answers your question is, can you lawfully adopt an ordinance and instruct us to bring you back something with other options? Yes, you can do that.
Well, why don't we do that?
I don't know how we do that.
It's not, the October one deadline is when your others are going to affect, but that is, you've got time to do what you want. I, I wouldn't be trying to do something by October one.
Now, Doug, it's recommended to go forever, but you have whatever times of your time to go because there are other things that will push on this a longer it takes before. The code in general is applied.
Well, and don't get me wrong, people's lives are very important to me, but I think we need to, as a council, let's put this to bed, not tonight, if that's what you guys want, or not to, but let's not linger this on for months and months. We have so many things in the city of Wormsburg that we're about. Once again, lives are very important, but I really feel that it's okay right now for Wormsburg to grandfather these businesses in for the moment unless you love something else.
Okay. So what do you need to do?
I made a motion, so we're gonna vote, yeah, I think I do.
Okay, okay, so we are going to vote to adopt or reject, um, rather than...
The motion, yes, the motion of consideration is, is to remove this particular subsection of chapter eleven from the code, eleven oh three point five, four.
With intentions of looking at this fifty-one fifty plan in the future?
That would be, that would be a separate question for the council.
If that one, yeah.
That's not a part of the motion. So what we're deciding right now is, do we side with the businesses? Do we side with public safety? And then, or do we fall somewhere in the middle? That's kind of...
I still feel, I feel with the public safety. I feel very safe going into those businesses with my family and even though they don't have straddle assistance, I still will go to those businesses. I feel very strong about that. I understand public safety, but I feel that those businesses have adequate signs and adequate exits for, and they still could have business. So my motion is first hands.
So who are we gonna take for adoption rejection?
This is not for adoption rejection, do you want this?
This is that changing amendment. So if they say no, that's a no vote for my...
For your vote, and then continue the discussion.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lynn?
No.
Watts?
No.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
And so now you have a bill before you with that amendment, which does not require any additional drafting, which would just include a provision that says delete the provisions of eleven point about zero three point five point one point one. And that would remain before you on its second reading for adoption or rejection, as amended now. That one passed and there's no discussion.
That's a...
That gives the clause for that, so we don't need to talk about the fifty-one percent. So at this point, someone needs to move approval of the ordinance as I mentioned.
Mr. Ford, can I, if I made a plan, Mr. Ford, can you approve? For adoption rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lynn?
No.
Watts?
No.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
So presented to the audience, the ordinance as amended, was adopted.
As amended, meaning to grandfather Allen.
We can move all that.
Yeah, that's it.
Breakfast time tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, is there any other research I need to do or anything, just to make this work? Insert that provision.
I did my drawing today. We're happy to do this, of course, anything that you want, of course. There are never any other ill will clauses. Just for doing our jobs.
No, I appreciate your talk. I know you said mayor, but I appreciate your talk too, what you've done, but I still business right now, can still, and I already are with, with, you know, here.
But thank you, I know it was hard. Thank you for your work. I appreciate the briefings that you had.
I'd like to pay the council a lot of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for listening to me, sorry I got a little high.
Whatever.
See ya, where it goes.
Hey, I never thought this would be a good one to say.
No, right?
Next, we have a second reading of ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand eighteen, for the city of Wormsburg, Missouri.
I'm the mayor, member of the city council. Uh, the budget that's scheduled for the year includes the CIP, including all the changes that were asked staff in the past few weeks. Uh, the number that, you know, our will, that is, are more in line with what we expect the end of the year to be. There, there has been a change in the estimated revenue due to the lease agreement that we would have to go into, uh, the purchase of Sweeper. So if you, if you notice the, the change in revenue, that will be that not solo in the expenses, that will make your, uh, the lease for the Sweeper and the ninety thousand for the patrol car and bike cam.
Any questions, board?
I have a question on the unfunded. I wonder what it was, you know?
If you're kind of looking to fund it. It must've been important. It could've been.
Oh, the police patrol vehicles, uh, that number unfunded stands at a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. Does that take into account the, uh, highway patrol vehicles?
No, that came out of this year's budget.
No, that would be, that's mentioned, but it was thirty-three thousand nine fifty.
Right.
That was, that, the highway patrol vehicles helped with some of that.
Right.
Replacements, some replacements, some highway patrol vehicles, so.
I was curious on how that items unfunded with that shelter assistant manager, how, how Matthew gets into the budget unfunded? It's because we don't have the money for it and you're making a spot for that?
Oh, it's not in the budget.
Oh, okay, those are things we, okay. So we didn't do the, those things, that the items unfunded, those were not...
Yeah, so those are outstanding, I know, but will be there if we wanna, we can look at this, you know, six months. And add them in, or if you guys need it at some time during the year.
And the total cost of the street sweeper was how much?
Two seventy.
Oh, I thought we were...
No, it went, it went down, uh, we got about two fifty, around two fifty range.
And this in, so that would not be, so that's what it not financed?
No, that's what it financed. So, um, when you do a lease agreement, you have to put, you have to account for the total, uh, two, the two fifty in this case, in the revenue and any expenses, so it kinda offsets.
On the, on the police car replacement there, do we, do we have anything in the budget at all to, for future, as the cars get older, which right now, they're going to hunt it? Yeah, we haven't replaced cars for two years now, this will be our third year now replacing them. No, I'm sorry, we didn't replace them last year, it's our second year now replacing them. And we're doing pretty good. We had the two we brought to you that were becoming money pits. One of the things that, that I wanted to look at when I got here is ensuring that we were replacing the cars when we needed to, not when they got a certain mileage on them. The past practice had been to replace them at seventy thousand miles, whether they were still good or not. We don't get anything for them when we sell them off at auction, so it really is in our best interest to keep them as long as we can, especially when you have one that's running good. You know, a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen doesn't sound like a lot of mileage on a personal car, but on a police car, it's quite a bit. So, um, I, I think we can, right now, we're in a state where we can get by without vehicles for this year and we'll come back to you next year, see where things are, so, um, we're, we're doing some things to try and maximize what we have.
We do have something that works to, uh, begin a vehicle replacement fund.
Right.
I think that's what I was getting at.
Right, I know, I know with the fire trucks, because we're talking about millions of dollars, thirty thousand dollars, but, you know...
They budgeted for them in the future if we needed them.
Right.
Yeah, so, so, uh, what that'll entail is create its own department, basically, or maybe a fund, and we'll have to, uh, to, uh, fund that fund on a yearly basis. But I think, I think I know a, a good way to get that, uh, one by next step, but, they, we, we do have quite a few cars that, uh, be coming up here pretty shortly, that'll make a year's budget.
I mean, did I just, you know, that's pretty, the purple fires or the purple police cars running around, it's like kinda like the black ones, you know? I would, I would hate the thing if we go there in years, we know we have a purple one and we have a blue one and we have a...
Or is there a red one on there?
It's maroon. Maroon, now we're gonna call it...
It's a public, have to create feedback on it.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's sometimes you speak up what you ask for, right? So the situation with that is, and there's gonna be a brown one coming up too, a dark brown, which actually looks black, but they were, they were purchased originally as active vehicles, um, and they were purchased in those colors before I got here, so I, I don't know why they were purchased in those colors. From this point forward, we'll be buying black vehicles, um, when we buy new ones, so they can be either black and white, or if they're not being marketed, they'll still be just black. We brought those in, they're both the Ford Explorers, the Ford, the vehicles we're replacing with Ford Explorers, so all the equipment transferred over, so we saved all the costs on that. And so that's why you're gonna see a maroon and white and a brown. I think it's great we saved all that money, I just, I just don't want to see our police force go, we have a purple one and a brown one.
I like it though, now that we follow you and we're...
I like it though, it looks like, oh, I'm driving through a thirty-five mile, I'm scared of them now. We will not have a multicolored fleet like the council at that. I love what, except for, who I have a patrol car, should I have a choice?
I like the black and whites.
When, when you do the funding of, of the vehicles on a replacement basis, will the state, uh, the state, uh, player in that at all?
Yes, we, we look at state vehicles on our first. We, we, uh, actually, our local, uh, when we bought cars, we gave our local dealer the opportunity to, to sell them as a state bid price, so that it, uh, the variable support of them. And it did.
This is for adoption rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have first and second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a maintenance and equipment lease with Marco Technologies.
Uh, I'm the mayor, member of the city council, uh, for a little while, we're here now. I T has worked with finance department, uh, to update the city's copier. And on August the seventh, we received bids from three companies, GFI, Digital, Marco is number one. Uh, Marco offered the city the best price at a hundred and nine thousand dollars for nine machines. And at the end of this lease, the city may return that equipment to the vendor, trade them in for, for new machines and we can start this all over, or we can buy them back for a dollar. Staff will recommend the approval of the ordinance.
I made your voice say it once again. What'd you say? I made you say it once again.
Five people, it's five people.
But they have the same common, like, copier, inkers, stuff, whatever, because I sometimes I'm looking at it myself and it's, I was just...
Is it the one where they replace it?
Yeah, they'll, they'll do all that themselves. So we, we, it comes with a maintenance agreement. The maintenance agreement includes the toner and any maintenance of the copiers needed. Right now, at City Hall, we have, we have two dinosaurs that are, they are, it's pretty tough. That's basically why we don't have a printed button yet, so.
Remember, say, or unless we pass this, I can read the title. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a maintenance and equipment lease with Marco Technologies LLC. This is for adoption rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Johnston?
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance mending ordinance five three six five concerning the adopted fiscal year eighteen annual budget for the city Warrensburg year end numbers.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, uh, what you have for you are amendments to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget. Uh, these amendments have been done with, uh, no increase to the general fund budget. As we talked about earlier, the police patrol vehicles are included in this, uh, to cover the costs of those that have been included in this and a few other things that have been during the year. There is a, a increase to the CIP, but, uh, we did an amendment earlier in the year to, to bring, to pay for the, uh, breaking access in the CIP. But the, the actual expenditure of those funds was not in that amendment. So that was really still a net, uh, zero in that account as well. Are there any questions with the amendments?
Move to pass that ordinance to second reading by title.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-three sixty-five concerning the adopted fiscal year eighteen annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption or rejection, Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think we already went through the appearances. So we will move on to miscellaneous matters from the mayor and the city council. Um, next, we have mayoral appointments. Um, I would like to appoint Michelle Tackett to Parks Recreation Board.
You don't got the application?
Uh huh.
Jacobs? Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, now the city managers report.
He had nothing additional than what was already written.
Thank you. I have a hard time opening that sometimes on this. My regular one top I don't, but if I try to open that.
Is it because you clicked dot X? You clicked the PDF.
It works here, but it didn't work at my office. So.
Terrible. It's good. All right, and then the director of finance report.
Just a few things. We have the audit, uh, preliminary audit scheduled for October eighth. So going over fiscal year eighteen numbers. Uh, as of so far year to date, uh, the city's operating is a surplus of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. I expected it to be something like that in the year.
Everything's doing good? You're not nervous about coming?
No, never knows.
I've never heard, I love auditors. I love you well in the audit.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I mean, I'm just a fan of everything that they have.
Far?
Yeah, nothing additional.
Thank you. Slime?
Several things. Uh, signal projects will probably get, uh, been putting underground conduits around all the locations, putting pole bases. Uh, I think while we turn out to support the signal heads, uh, we've got a pullback room full of equipment here. Uh, so we got labor equipment for them or, uh, we sell, we don't hold, uh, land type on that. So, uh, we look forward to the SLA to probably, of course, pull, take place, uh, November, December five. Unfortunately, the project moving along, the whole street project, uh, should be opened up, uh, by Friday. We'll have no more detours. Looks good.
And you made a deadline.
The only, uh, issue that we will have is their KC Penile will not have, uh, the lumi- lumi- nature lights up. For some reason, they thought they need to send some folks out to help people to perfect the floor. So we're going to shorten.
Is it pretty dark? Have you been out there?
It's, it's not good. But, uh, Redwood Road Phase One has also been along well. They're, uh, bringing, they're contracted to have those poles set. Uh, on that, uh, and we're getting close to the final set on that project. So.
ETA on that one?
Pardon?
You have an ETA on that one?
Uh, whenever you want to use it, I'll ensure that, uh, we get it out.
Did you, did I miss what timeline you have? So I think it's been on Casey Penile getting her lights up?
Out here?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I assume the term this time. We're probably gonna have, you'll see traffic barrels sitting over, uh, the bases for, uh, basic safety protection. Uh, but we do want to get it open back up for students and folks to get up and down the street. We have our only legitimate section of bike lane in this piece out here. Uh, it actually had the two width where we get bike lane in there. So that's kind of the agenda. Probably want to get on down Holden Street. On that Holden to LA. Sort of connect heavy with the people. Uh. The, uh, but of course, I did mention Redwood Road Phase One. Uh, we have a MS four stormwater inspection, uh, performed by MDNR. Last Thursday, Friday here in town, they, they let, uh, records, well, we, we know what our stormwaters were permitting. Uh, with, uh, how staff was handling, uh, all of our protections and making sure we, particularly went off, those stormwater permits, uh, uh, the whole process. They did a lengthy, uh, review of our permit to all the paperwork on Thursday. Then, then site visits around all the projects, uh, on Friday. We are awaiting a report. We feel like, uh, it was a positive interaction with MDNR. And, uh, that we were, uh, from the ladies who talked to, we were above average among the communities because we are, uh, moving forward instead of, uh, not being programmed. And, uh, so there'll be some more things that we'll need to do before it can be reported. But, uh, we felt like that, uh, this is for final government honor, didn't, and this, but, uh, so. Uh, here's one in the process with what the staff and I believe the police manager in large is feeling expected. Uh, and one other item is, uh, that's been one of the discussions, uh, the difficult recycling society. Um, there's been a lot of issues with, uh, with the community of illicit dumping over there. Uh, how partners came and empty. The two permanent containers today. And basically, they could not take them out of the facility to sort through glass. Uh, they were filled full of garbage and trash. And they taken a lot of fill. And I do not believe that was intended to program what citizens believe they're getting. Uh, when they think they're re-sucking glass, they take those containers. So, containers have been removed for, uh, time. We've taken them, uh, brushed up area and that was being used by contractors, uh, considerable amount of the time. And, uh, everything is clean from the site right now with that some, a little bit of concrete work and stuff on there. But it will be closed for a period of time till we can come up with some new methods to get a handle on this. Where, uh, uh, it's not staff, uh, there is totally come there. They've got to take some responsibility for their actions. So, and, uh, I believe, uh, Councilman Allen made a comment one time about, uh, sweaters being, being looked slower down the street. From the information, the new sweaters that we're looking at has a year that, uh, if you want to step down, that's a dollars an hour. So it locks in, you can't sweep the other speed, but, uh, so. That's all there is.
Very good.
How about the, uh, fire of the electrical problem out of the sewer plant, Paul is it? Oh, uh, we had, uh, the situation after the Wester plant, uh, there was, uh, we were very, very fortunate with having a personnel perk. The main panel, which is about the length of your wall across there, um, it, uh, shorted out. They, uh, went out, went back and reset it, went out, hit the button to start the mode, uh, in the, our SBR basin number one. And, uh, everybody outside of building and basically that panel, there's a, what we call bucket. It's a compartment that has spuses in there that are very large, exploded. Uh, and there was a grounding short, uh, in the system in the line, underground, uh, wiring. So we, we were ready to rewire, pull all the wire through that one piece. Luckily, it did not mess up thus far the, the main panel system. And we're able to, uh, we'll get a new bucket, uh, to replace. I'm just thankful there was no personnel standing.
It was pretty costly?
Uh, we don't know exactly yet, but yes, it could be. We're, uh, we're looking at what to extend as well. It's kind of those, uh, as we replace pieces from all of them. Again, there was, we will not have anybody injured though.
Hopefully it's an insurance claim.
Yeah.
Think about it and insert.
It's been time to.
It runs through there, but it, so the, uh, you know, he considered that equipment run, uh, on something that, uh, that electrical system was a nineteen seventy-two system. And, uh, so it's, it is S and H. Uh, whenever they upgrade, they're gonna play out all another, uh, panels for them to all give the equipment on. But there were equipment left on the old panel. All three of the parts were available to pack. They, they FIA or. Exhaust. FIA. That was our next word. Yeah. They did find us. Good. Thank you. And then make the chief vote. No, no. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Garrett? Marcy? Nothing additional.
Nothing additional.
Ariel's in. We're working on putting it together. There's a few little minor, uh, programming problems, but they're fixed to that. Uh, the first year, we're trying to be announced while the public of the house rolling out all three of the trucks. And the old truck in front of us shows pass and what we have in fact, the city forum, the citizens' fur. Allow us to get them to protect themselves. Uh, we'll send an announcement out soon.
October third is National Puppy with a comp day. So coming up to Wendy's and, uh, I'll buy a couple of lumps again. From about eight to ten.
Do you guys still doing their thing right?
Yeah. So if you want to go up and, uh, have a cold one after a rough council meeting. Ten percent of everything at Buffalo Wild Wings goes to our AED fund, which is, uh, getting very large. Uh, we're actually getting close to purchasing, uh, Warrensburg Rotary, um, has agreed to, uh, they selected us as the manufacturer of their pork roast sale this year. So if you know Rotarian, uh, buy a pork roast from, uh, they're absolutely delicious. I take it, uh, council on, I think it's, uh, and, uh, we're getting, uh, it usually averages around five thousand. We think that's gonna put us over the top. So big thanks to Warrensburg, uh, New Rotary for doing that for us. We plan to, when all of the, uh, AEDs come in, we have a little plate that we're gonna put on each AED recognizing the donor of that AED. Uh, we plan to have a little, uh, shindig thanking them for their support with them, letting them get a picture taken with their AED. And, uh, saying that with, uh, a little special something from the police department as well. So let them. Yeah, Slim, where are they? What's, what's the cable that run over there on Chatham?
Probably not.
The cable that are buried on Chatham?
On Chatham?
Yeah. Do you know what they're doing over there?
Uh.
Fiber rock there.
Yeah.
Fiber rock.
It's a fiber. We've got it going on all the way.
Yeah.
We've got underground, just over, over there.
In the process, we had gas, man, they had a gas man the other day over there. They're in the process of running fibers through that whole section and then over into Fox Ridge and Buffalo River.
I just keep driving past it.
Daniel's speaking at five. Where are you speaking at?
Five o'clock on Friday, I believe, at the main stage. Walk around till somebody snacks.
That's right.
Yeah.
It would wait for the courthouse.
One of my own faces will have this year will be over there.
Yeah. Don't worry, I'll prepare. Yes, great.
I did forget something. I just remembered it. But all side was associated. Sorry. It is city county government day at the UCF game Saturday.
I missed it too.
And so I just wanted to, yeah, know that you would like to have something.
And Thursday, is it Thursday that you did mine for the, maybe a ticket count?
Yes. Well, I have a big place at seven, so I can be there. Yeah. We'll talk it over.
Yeah. What time is the game on Sunday? At one o'clock. Okay. Then that's like.
Farid, do you have anything?
Nope.
Good. Tom?
No, thank you.
Okay, I just had one thing. I got to meet last week, uh, Pioneer Trails hosted in, uh, event for some local, um, mayors and officials. One thing I hadn't thought of in this Dollar Tree distribution center was the impact it would have on the other communities nearby. Um, and they, other communities, their mayors and, um, economic development coordinators really were excited to talk to me about how Dollar Tree has positively impacted their communities. So things I hadn't thought of, I guess, when Missouri American Water needed water to, um, fill up Dollar Tree. Um, and they couldn't supply all of it. They tapped into Concordia. So Concordia was grateful because they received extra revenue or something like that. So it was something I hadn't thought of, but, um, they were all, I don't think I heard anybody say that they hadn't heard of Dollar Tree or had good things to say about it. So that was exciting. All right.
Yeah, they also provided the, out at Missouri Relators meeting. And it was the second largest project, project done in Missouri this year.
And this is not the better one. Then it's like the UCF. All right. Thank you.